Mr. Chairman, I'm glad to take you off the phone today. I appreciate everybody coming to the study session this day. We have a guest speaker, Mr. Edson Charles. It is going to be speaking to us about all kinds of things related to demographics, trends, and growth patterns and that kind of thing in Tennessee. They offer some different perspectives to you guys. I've sat there for training over the years. I was talking to Mr. Charles prior to being at San Francisco. Several years ago when I was working in West Tennessee City Management. I came spoke to the Tennessee City Management Association a couple of times. I know other times I've heard his speak. He provides technical perspective and is willing to argue if that he wants to. So without further ado, Mr. Chairman, I'll turn it over to him if you're ready. Mr. Charles, here.
If you can set the sound. So maybe what I can do is explain what we do and a little bit of our background. And then I think if you don't mind, we are the largest market research company in the United States. My wife and I own the company. And I happen to live in Nashville, so we got a lot of friends. We use stuff for all the cities in Middle Tennessee. We live free. And we've been doing that for over 30 years. I've got calls from mayors on, you can call me yourself if you want. So ours is a little bit different. So we live here. What we do is every four months, we pull all the courthouse records, plats of all new home subdivisions. And we track besides that, all the planning commission activity, all your agendas. Can you imagine tracking planning commission agendas? I bet you'd love that job. No, we must be nuts trying. Forty hours a week reading planning commission agendas in 16 states. That would be nuts. But we do that. And we have people that track all recordings and records, plats. And then we get in a car every four months and we go drive and count every new home subdivision. We've been doing that here for way over 30 years in the Middle Tennessee market. We've been in Sumter County driving every new home subdivision every four months. Way over 30 years. I'm not sure if 34, 35, whatever it is, long, long time. So after a while you get to know and watch things grow. And the thing that surprises me the most about town actually, I can't believe I hardly recognize that place. It's absolutely crazy. But in Sumter County, we have been doing this all these years. And so what happens once we have all the data, and I made the decision when I started the company years ago, that I would get no information from no one else, that we would have no charts or graphs from anybody else. And we would do all of our own work. We would go all the courthouse works, all the records. We don't even get permit data from HUD or from Census. We don't do that. We talk to 900 permit recording areas all the time. It's our own data, our own way. So I'm not here to tell you what somebody else is doing or what somebody else said. We just don't do that. Our forecasting has been enormously accurate, not because we're so darn smart. It's just because we stumbled on the things that work. You know, I wish I could tell you that everybody's so, they're acting, everybody knows what they're doing. But that's not always true. So what I'd like to do, how can I help this conversation? Because varying people are here for varying reasons, I promise you. And maybe some misunderstood and think that I'm here for a major market research presentation, which I'm not. But I thought I would at least touch Sumter County a little bit and the local market. And maybe nationally where we're at quickly, make some people feel good that they didn't come for nothing. And then maybe get it down to what I see going on here going forward in the county. But also I want to touch some of the things that are in process of conversation about lot sizes and density. All those things. I'm not going to spend much time. I know they gave you a fair amount of time to do this. I'm not going to say. I'm just, I'm not going to waste your time. So what we do, we tackle up here, you can see, it's hard to see a little bit. There's a lot of light in here. I wish we could go up and shut the lights in here. That would make better. And Josh is going to go take care of it, right? And so we have 12 counties on this map. I'm going to talk to you about 11 of them. What I do is I keep Montgomery County separate with a separate report. Montgomery County up here. And the reason I keep it separate is because the base commander at the 101st Airborne sends troops out and off the base intentionally to screw up my charts. He's just a stinker, he does it on purpose. And besides that, I was eight years in reporting jobs, right? You know, the army's okay, but you know, they just gotta get your act here sometimes. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to pick up the whole Sumter County world. I break Sumter County into three major pieces. The whole general part of Hendersonville and the whole general part of the Galleto World and the rest of the county. I leave Portland and there are certain things with the county party. We didn't break all those three major segments into eight more pieces. So I'm looking at a lot of different pieces for housing, for land, for people and movement of people. We have in Sumter County, I have all the people, all the population, all broken down into 68 types down the address. I can just about tell what most go shopping or they go vacation. And it's right down to name and address. I know that sounds awful, but there it is, right? And so ours is the ability to see what are people doing? And I would tell you this is here at the development community, start with this, and then the builder community. It's made a major mistake in Sumter County. They're not taking care of the elderly at all. I know that they think they are, but they're really doing, I think, a very poor job of being able to look at the elderly and where they're going, what their needs are. I just honestly believe that. And I just turned 80 years old myself. I was still working 50, 60 hours a week here I would do, right? And so I've become more conscious of the older people. Because I can remember one of the older people, you see. And speaking of that, I used to have a guy work for me, my name is David Ramsey. And I keep teasing David that he's getting to be an old guy also. Let me just take this out of here. And what we have, and I'm going to deal with the overall Nashville market first. A little hard to see the charts, but I'll try and do my best to explain so that everybody in the audience can hear. I'm looking at 11 county parts. Remember, I keep Montgomery County separate. And we're looking at 42,630 homes built in all of the market. The whole thing, I'm going to get down to Sumter in a little bit. What we're finding is that there was a time when we were delivering homes under 125,000 hours with the lot. And then it was under 175,000 with the lot. And then it got to the place now of under 225,000 in the lot. And now we're on the way to, within about a year and a half, to no longer build to deliver under 275 with the lot. So the home market at one point was all of this. And then it changed to not this working and not this was working and not this is working. And soon not this is working. And we're going to end up with a market like this. That is really a problem. Because what do you do with the older people who don't want to buy that big stinking house? Or the younger kids? They say, well, we gotta find a way, first fire market, we gotta find a way, take care of the other. I don't know how you're going to do it. Land prices go up, I don't know how you do it. It's really a problem. And we have more rules, more regulations all the time. And so it's harder to accommodate the kids. When our grandkids come, the ones that aren't even born, we're going to have a problem accommodating them. Because prices have gone up and all of that. So it's a real issue. Let me take this out of here. And I'm going to show you Sumter. Four months ago in Sumter County, we were moving in on an annual basis of about 1,800 homes for previous 12 months. Today we're moving at a 1,638 range. And I think that that's going forward is not going to be too distant from where it is. Let me take this out of here. And all the way past some of this right here, I'm not here to give you all of this. That's not the purpose for coming. I've actually started somewhere into the middle of this thing. But I want to show you what's happening overall market. And we have 1,167, you can see at the very bottom, if you can't, I'll tell you the number. These are started and not started subdivisions in all the 11 counties. If you go back just one, two, three years ago, we had 1361. What's happened is that we've not been able to keep up with approvals in planning commissions in cities and municipalities. And we have 200 less subdivisions in the metro market that are not there today, that are not coming. And I think it's a real, real problem. But if you looked at of the 1,167 subdivisions started and not started today, there's 825 that are actually started. Let me go back three years ago, one, two, three years ago, where we had 903. What we have done is we have finished 78 subdivisions that have not been replaced. That's the equivalent of a whole county that was as small. They've not been replaced, they're not there, you can't move with enough. Let me tell you another one. We went from basically 20,500 lots all the way down to 18. And if you took the pandemic out, it'd be about 17,000. We have dropped tons and tons of lots that are just not there. So you don't have realistically Middle Tennessee's development capacity. You don't have enough stuff coming and to accommodate everything. Let me tell you my approach to this conversation, all my conversations. It is not about land and lots, and it's not about houses, and it's not about developers. It's not about planning commission people. It's not about you. It's not about that. It's about people. Everybody goes up there. And I've tried for a long time to figure out, what is my job? And it's the same as your job. So everybody's job is to help. You know what it is? Somehow we have to find a way of accommodating everybody. And that's an enormous feat. I don't know how you pull that off. But we have to find a way of dealing with rich and poor, have to deal with everything. And I don't know how you do that. It takes an amazing amount of thought and discipline. It's a very tough job. Let me take you to another thing. If all of this is about lots back in here, what's coming? All this is about land. Let me give you just, again, just a little overview. And then I'll talk to you about where the market's going. And then I'll talk to you about how, maybe I can help with some of the thoughts. We crested in the marketplace a year and four months ago. Where Nashville had 8,027 houses under construction, all 11 counties. Today we only have 6,400 under construction. You say, well, the market's been pretty good. Actually, it has come off by about 1,600 houses that we don't have going today, that we had just going a year and four months ago. Of the 6,400 going today, 4,085 are under construction. Remember, this is called hand counting. In Sumter County, as in every county, we hand count everything every four months. We have 4,000 under construction and 2,300 sitting there, finished and occupied. Let me just give you another perspective on something. Current lot inventory is 18,000. We're terribly short. And just next year, we're going to use 14,916 in 11 counties. Somehow the total demand for lots between now and the end of '29 is 92,141. That's 11 counties. 10,200 of those will be Williamson County. Williamson County is heading for a wall. They put in rules and regulations that are putting, it's the first day place, six, seven years from now. It's going to be absolute hit the wall kind of thing. I'll explain to you in a little while. And Davidson County, which is quite amazing, they're looking at 21,000 just there. So what we have is we have a shortage, we are not accommodating the market. And we have things and we have people that unfortunately are having kids. And unfortunately Nashville's a pretty good situation where there's no state income tax. And Nashville's one place to be. And so they're coming from California and from Chicago and from all the places that if you totally, you die. You know, something like that. And so let me take this out of here. And past all of this, and I'm going to turn all the way past interest rate tracking and all of that, way past. Because I don't want to bore you with all of this excessive amount of detail. That's not the purpose for my coming. I'm going to go back past that just in a minute. But I want to take us all the way over, if you don't mind, to Sumter County. Let me start here first of all, if I go back here. We are right now in Sumter County, have all of this right back up in here. We have subdivisions that are sitting there that have odd lots left, that we're quite surprised that they haven't been taken up. But so there is that thing, kind of thing going. It's not just all of the planning commissions pushing through and the council and all of that. There are still odd lots here, there, that are sitting there. It's not a crisis, but they're there. So you cannot, somebody and I cannot come up to me and tell me that we don't have any lots up there. That's absolutely a lie. Let me just take this here now, pass this, and I'll pass Davidson County and get over here to Sumter. Again, we take Sumter County and break it down into what we call 98. And that is the Henderson, Greater Hendersonville world, if there's such a thing as Greater Hendersonville. And then we break that into eight price ranges. We take the Galleto World and then break that into eight price ranges. And then Sumter County, the rest of the county, including the Portland World and White House and that. And so we have all these submarkets. So we are able to buy spot in the county with all of our banks. At one time we had 181 banks applying source. What we do in our banks, we have a risk analysis program that they can run. And they could pick any spot in any part of Sumter County. And we could tell them within just six minutes, the degree of risk a building spent over to 100,000. And so we're very detailed, very careful, very cautious. So I'm not approaching my conversation with you as somebody who's here. I don't even have an agenda. Okay? That's not the purpose. But I'm not coming from guessing, none of my stuff that I would tell you. Let me take you here. Here's the current state of the county now in Sumter County. We have 206 finished and occupied homes out there. I don't want more than 159. So we are overbuilding in some parts of the county. And I know that's not the reason, let me do it. One of the big things we've been forced to do is we're forced to build between 325 and 625 price ranges. Because you can't get the thing to work below the 325 market anymore, hardly. I have very small market from 275, 325, and the 225, 275 is surely, but almost gone, it's almost disappeared. And so what we're saying to the public, it won't be long, within two years, you'll be in a place where if you can't afford a $325,000 home, get close to ours. That's what we're getting there. I mean, I took the work really hard at accomplishing that. Here, the market now over 625 to 925 is reasonably okay, but it's not a major market. But the market from 925 to a million four, a million four over. And the county, I know we sell homes in that price range, but it's very miniscule. It's not a big market. Let me take here and move us now to the next one here. This is all of the whole county. Here's a three-year picture from here all the way to here is three years. And here's how many closings. This, every bar is four months apart to our audits. Here's an exact count. And you can tell that COVID put us into a little bit of a crack, actually coming out of COVID 21, 22. And we've been up a little bit, but the last four months we've come off just a hair. But our sense is that the market is going to be like this. Here's the caution range for inventory, and we're down here. The discipline of the builders around here is quite amazing that they don't overbuild. I mean, in three years I found very little of that that has taken place. If you look in the Hendersonville world, the southwest part of Sumter County, because it's greater Hendersonville, we were right here and here. But in the last four months, it's really fallen off. The Hendersonville market is a problem, but availability of lots has fallen off. But you can almost find a market running through here flat. Let me take this here, this is the Galleto World, and here's right here. Been so many odd lots and smaller subdivisions are now being absorbed because of can you elsewhere? And then we come back and look at the county part of the whole thing. And we track all the subdivisions, small and big, are down to a few lots. And here's what's going on there. It's a bit of a trend here, you see this? But COVID took us down a little bit, and we're back. I suspect that we're going to see this. And the inventory is just where it should be, being quite full. Let me take this past all of these other counties that I'm going to go back to the beginning and address what are the reasons for coming besides all of this data. I think I'm showing you all this so that you can know that we're careful on how we do things. Let's take a look at Sumter County. The current lot inventory is 3,598 lots. Well, the balance is 24, we're going to use 1,405 of those. And if you want to look at the market is forecasting, it's forecasting this amount of homes built between now and the end of '29, all the way up. I'm going to deal with that in a different way in a second. If we come back and we break it down in more detail here. Here's how the market in the 11 counties has gone. And it's going to take us all the way to 2030. And it's gone up like this and right through here and back up. And then we got to the place where 2019 rolled around right here. And we were just turning the corner a little bit. And but then COVID came and there was a lot of people were afraid to list their house because it's somebody that's going to come to look at the house, to buy the house. And they're afraid they're going to get sick. And then they're going to get COVID, they're going to take their mom and dad and grab their grandma, somebody's going to die. So they stopped listing their homes. And we had more, the inventory for existing homes, of course you know that, the bottom just dropped out of it. We were getting multiple offers above asking price. It was crazy. So the builder world had to pick up and pick up someone's slack. But the trend is right through here. That's where the market is. And so COVID took us up, it's taken us back down, we're coming off a little bit, and we're right here. And we're trending right back to where we were before COVID. And we're going to go here, now the little gold colored part of the bar, which you can hardly tell, but it's up here. I'll tell you what that is. That's what would happen if, because before the Democrats got out of office, I'm not trying to be political, but before they got out of office in DC, they voted a lot of things true so that Biden had money to spend after they lost the House. And so if he spends it, they're going to have to print the money. And that printing of money is going to raise the inflation and home building is going to fall off. But I don't think he's got enough time to pull it off. And so I think we're right through here is where we're headed. And I think that's where the market is. And it's pretty close to that is how the United States is going. Let me show you this one here. Here's 2025. I think that the Sumter County market is going to be 1,567. It's going to be all of this and down to higher densities. So let me just tell you my perspective of how we're playing. I got an invitation to go to Murray County. And at a bank, Farmers and Merchants Bank. And I went to Farmers and Merchants Bank and after hours, and somebody gave me a key, hoping they wouldn't let me in. And I was curious to see what they want to talk about. And all these old guys, including mayors, were at this talk of meeting in a locker room kind of thing. And I thought maybe they're going to give me a greeting, you know, lock me up or something. And they said, Mr. Charles, he said, well, what happens if we gave you Murray County? Oh, I said, don't talk so stupid. I said, you don't know what I would do with it. I said, we don't plan the way I would plan. I don't plan ahead. I'll tell you a story so you can build my mind before I show you something here. I don't plan ahead. I always plan backwards. I said, I would take the whole county and fill it with people. And you have to find a way of accommodating all the people. People who live there need a teenager track. People who live would need small, so we need density. You have to find a way to touch the poor and the rich in all kinds of ways. And then you have to accommodate, where should you put the city hall when this place works out, right? Where should you have parks? Or should you have planned for four, five lane roads 25 years from now? So you don't have to go back and tear buildings down and do all the stupid stuff that we do. I said, if you wanted my advice, I would show you how to plan backwards. And so they set up for me to go to Central High School in Murray County. It's an old high school with a big stage, it's all five, six steps to go up. And I can really did it. I put up three big screens. And I tell you what I did, I put up three big screens. And I tell you, it's important, because what I'm about to tell you. And the two end screens, I did overhead projectors, ten by ten screens. And I had two guys, we were gonna click on the screens when I told them to. And I was in the middle, and I was gonna do the presentation of what they could do with Murray County, but accommodate everybody, not me. So we can't do it. No, you can't. We don't have the choice. You know what? You don't have a single choice, but to accommodate the whole, everybody. It's not just our own attitudes at all, because how do we accommodate the whole bunch? Anyway, so it happened, right? I told the guys on the outside edge to click them on. I said, here's how I think. And I had a scripture verse on the Joen, on the big screen. It said that the parents are the layup for the children's children. That the parents are the layup for the children's children. What else are you gonna plan for? Are you gonna plan for yourself? Who gives a crap about you, right? Come on. Who cares even about the kids? That's not a little bit true. You plan for the grandkids. You need to be planning whatever we're gonna talk about here. Let's talk about how do you plan for the grandkids that are not even born? That when you die, that you will accommodate someone who's not, that's alive. That's what we need to plan. It's not about us here today. Whatever you're gonna decide, however you decide about whatever you decide. It's about the kids weren't born, and some who are. We've got to see it that way, and then we've got to then think, in that context, if the whole county were full, how would I have done the county? Because there is places for somebody who's got a big house, who doesn't want nobody next door, that he's got to save the money, and he don't want you next door. And then there's a guy who can't afford, doggone thing, he's had back breaks in his life, and he's gotta rent, and he's gotta stay in his apartment. How do you accommodate the one that's coming out of high school? Right now, you can't do that. They gotta stay at home longer, they gotta live with mom and dad longer. How do you accommodate? I'm gonna tell you right now, it is possible to do that. If you put your mind to it, and put your heart to it, if your goal is to accommodate everybody, you can pull it off. What you can't do is you cannot accommodate the rich and the powerful, and the people with big mouths. Can't do that. Nor can you focus only on the poor. You can't do that. You've got to find a way of accommodating everybody. Let me just take you back. I'm gonna go back now, and all the way through the beginning, you let me do this, I know there's a way that some of you techies out here know how to do this, go backwards, I don't know how to do that. And my problem is at eighty years old, see, I don't give a crap no more. And let me tell you what, let me just tell you something funny. At eighty years old, I could say more, anything and get away with almost anything. I don't know how they have to be politically correct no more. It's a real fun time of life. And not only that, if somebody spent one year, wanna disagree with me, you know what they think? Ah, screw it, he's senile anyway, so we're fine. We'll just all put up with the old guy, you know what I mean? So I'm safe, no matter what I do. But I'm gonna take you back, and I want to show you something that's really important, and then I'm gonna quit. But terribly, I could sit here and go through all this detail and show exactly where to go and what to do in the price point, and all that, I could, but I want to come back here. And I want to show you five things. I want to show you five things. What if you come in and you have a road? What if you come in and you have a road? And you put in a half acre lot? Well, nobody likes that, because the county says one acre. But let's just do that, one acre. Well, so when it comes later on, we've got to fix. That guy's got a big taxes for fixing up. Now, if you put one on your side of the road, you see, then he can contribute to that space right there, and they can fix that road. But what if you don't want to do that? What if you want that one guy to do five acres? Or ten? Then that one house, the taxes on that one house, have to accommodate and fix it. Not today, not today, we're fine today. It's down the road. And what does that down the road look like? It creates a financial problem for the county. And not today, we don't take that into consideration. But if you, again, if you have a house charging so much taxes, it's to contribute to fix other things in the county, and schools, I understand that. But I'm just using the road as an example. And again, as I just showed you, if you put that one here, they can split that road here, and they can contribute to fixing that road. But if, if we're saying that I got one, one family, same house size, and they're gonna have to fix the road here. You could have one guy, this guy, I suppose, but they're gonna fix the road for five acres, and more distance. Eventually, eventually, that decision is a county financial problem. You know how we solve it? Well, you raise that taxes, because we don't have a choice. And so what you have, Williamson County right now, is five, six, seven years away by planning for maybe an impact. And that's gonna be a problem, because it is, sooner or later, it's gonna impact the county as one of five points. So you have a financial decision, whatever make a decision today, it's gonna have a financial impact, not going. Now, you could come and debate with me schools and all of this, and they like this, and they went back to the corner, and then somebody stopped sense, and all these dirtbags stuff. We can debate that. The issue is that you need to have, whoever's gonna be in that house has got to do their fair contribution to roads and all gear pieces. But it'd be much better off, you see, if you had five acres contributing, six acre houses, five times the income. But let's suppose you don't like that idea, because sure, some of you don't like the idea. But again, you have to know, I age, it's hard to care. I'm trying real hard. So let me just give you another thing. What about the retirees? I just told you that the builder world has not done a good job taking care of retirees. You know what the retirees don't want to do? They don't want to cut two acres, acre and a two acre, they don't want to do that. They're trying their best to try to move down. So I have, so if we're saying that we want to own pretty good sized houses, not the guys who are in the forty, fifty, they're old, and now they want nobody makes so, but they're coming back, but they'll get old, they don't think so, but they will. I understand what that means. They'll get old, and they want to move down. So, because they won't pay anything, but I'll lean in the county, right? Well, think about it. I'll even go to the existing homes somewhere, a smaller, but the new is gonna be very difficult, because they don't want, they don't want the acres, you know? They're trying to move down, for God's sakes. But we're not giving that choice with the retirees. So I don't think that we are approaching the retirees as a builder community, as a developer community, and in middle Tennessee, as developers, and as government. I think they're doing an awful job of looking after the retirement market. They want to move down, so I have a stock tip, I have a stock tip for everybody here. Buy stock in companies that sell towels. Buy stock in companies that sell towels, wash towels. Because these people, these big houses, cannot move down, but I'll lean down. So they're gonna buy towels to go upstairs, to put underneath the doors, to go walk upstairs, so they don't have to lean down. I want you to be careful with something. You have a financial responsibility to the county. And I think that the wrong decision will catch up to you. He said, well, we got that figured out, Dan. Yeah, we got it figured out. I promise you, the person figuring it out probably is biased. And then retirees, we are doing such a poor job looking after. You know who these people are? These are the ones who pay for all the roads out here, and all this stuff, over forty guys every twenty, twenty, forty years. They paid for all that. And now we're saying to them, we're about to say to them, look, you can't stand here no more. If you're gonna stand here, you're gonna stay in this thing in us. I know it's too big, but we're not, I want you to move down. Oh, you have the money to move down, fine, but you have to cut a lot of stinky grass. You get off this. There's also the landowners' loss of value. I think that's what we're talking about, right? And we just, let me just tell you, they've been talking here for years and years and years. Hundred twenty roots in the family, and that's what it's all about. And so you've got to track the land. And you know how to get one lot per acre city. And we're talking now of not doing that. We're saying you can get one here, and one here, and one here, because you can't get these fifteen lots, you're gonna get three. Or six, even, if we get down to an acre or so. I did a study for Williamson County. And this is like for Williamson County. And the loss of that, let me tell you, let me show you. They did five acre tract, they did one lot for five acres. Let me show you how that works. They got one lot for five acres. That first acre lot, first lot, first acre, is worth the same lawn money under eighty, you can come on. It's the same value. The problem is, they don't want five acres of law to people. And the second acre, I came up, was about half the value of the first acre. And the third acre, which really nobody wanted, was about only twenty percent of the other ones, it wasn't a quarter. And then the fourth acre, they just want to take it and tell somebody what it's gonna be. And then the last acre, said, please, don't let me dig it, please, don't let me dig it. And so when you look at the averages all together, it was a loss of about forty, forty-five percent of land values. Now, I got something in the newspaper that says it's not bad, but it's true. It's just, this is true. And there's bias all over basically, but the answer is that whoever owns the land has got to take a hit. Let me take you to another one. And there's the children's ability to buy as they age, as they get older. I would tell you that, I know it for a fact now, that you have, it becomes a place. We're talking, you do most of all, where you end, we're talking. Oh, right here? Yeah, about the value of properties, right? In Williamson County. And you made a comment, and the average price up here was what? And how much, how much, how come, totally. What was the average price in Williamson County?
In twenty twenty, it was six hundred ninety thousand.
And not today?
One point three million.
Ah! Now, we tracked all that, right? I better hear it from you, see, if I say something, it's all better for you to see. But the answer is, you're gonna have that, and what it does, it takes away from the kids. So the parents are, well, you know, not all the parents need help. And they're, they're, oh. Because of the decision. Let me tell you another one, in my life. The grandchildren, I mean, it's overweight. There's no chance, oh, we look closer, mom and dad, and grandma, as they're born and all that stuff, that's not gonna be there. And not only that, the county's gonna be deteriorated because we're gonna get less people. It's not gonna bring industry, it's not gonna bring things, it's not gonna bring, it's not gonna bring, it's not gonna bring, and even fresh cars. It's just, so let me just show you the issue. It's right here. There's five things that affect you. There is gonna happen, there will be a financial impact of whatever decision you make. You can ignore it all you want, and you can be on, you can be here for a while, and you can be gone, you can go all day. Sooner or later, it's gonna impact, it's gonna impact your kids. And the retirees, we're doing a poor job now, what are they gonna move down to? And then the landlords, loss of value. And your kids have a real tough time buying, I can tell you, I know counties where they have no choice but to move. And then you've got the grandchildren, we're just, we're not even considering that. I'm just telling you, this is the number one issue right here. Parents are the layup for the children's children, are right here. But we have to be careful that we take this into consideration. So I tell you what I did, I tried to do something of how can you display this? And because you can turn around numbers like I can. But I took, and I put all the stuff in the county on here. All these dots up here are current subdivisions. I know you can't read it, but that's not the purpose. So I decided to say, how much land does a total, all the homes in a year, a vibrant year, how much space does it take up? It takes up this much space. That's how much the county has taken up in one year, a house, a new homes, that little lot right there. So if you were to fill the whole county, you would have to be taking somewhere in about fifty-five years in order to pull this up. I don't know, Josh, if yourselves, if you wanted to open for questions, or what would you like to do? Why don't we just keep the questions amongst here first, and then if you want to open up, let's answer these questions first. And then if you want to open up, I'm getting.
That's great.
Okay?
That's great. Does anybody have any questions?
Does your data show any evidence of any kind of a bubble with the real estate market or anything like that? Or does it just consistently show growth across the board?
No, it doesn't show a bubble, because that presumes that we're gonna hit, we're gonna touch the recession button. I have a chart here I can go through, it's ten minutes, I'm gonna pass it. But I'll explain and answer your question. But the last round we did, in nineteen seventy-nine, we knew. I have all the records and all the financial figures of the United States that we tracked since nineteen seventy-one, by month. And so we were able to chart and know when these things take place, and why. We could test it. We knew that this was not gonna happen, this go wrong. Although the pandemic did throw a little tinker in our forecasting, but still, but we are, let me show you, to answer your question better. And I'll do it down here. When the market's coming down, it doesn't go down and then up. What it does, it reaches a bottom, and it runs along in a flat place for some time, and then it makes a curve coming back up. Back in the early part of twenty-three, I told everybody, we're gonna reach that flat place in November of twenty-three, last November. I wish I could tell you that I was right, I can't prove it yet, but over time, will become more obvious whether that was close, you know? Because when you start dealing with tomorrow, I don't give a crap who you are, you're still guessing. And, but we've had so much experience, and we do so many counties, so it's all a thing, it helps. But I think that you're gonna see the turning in this market right here, in August of this year. And I think that that's coming. But I really do believe that November was the turning point. And so I don't see it at the bottom, I just don't think it's coming. Is there another question, anybody?
We're good? I have to. Okay, very well. You've said several times about the decisions that we're about to make, or going to effect. Which decisions are you talking about?
Well, here, if, I know we've been pacified eight or five.
Correct.
Yeah, we've pacified eight or five. But both different counties messed about that, and Williamson County pulled it off. But what it does, it makes all the things that showed you even worse, you see. So now, if we come back and we come down to four acres or three acres, what you're talking about, if there's any word of conversation is, if we get down, we track our walls, so it knows not too much surprise. But if you're two and a half acres per house, it doesn't have almost any difference in one lot and five acres. All the things I said are gonna hurt you.
Well, but you're assuming the entire county is going to be five acre lots. And we have municipalities that don't follow those rules. And we will have the two and three acres, acres, the hundred thousand square foot lots. There are also zone changes that are capable of being done. There's lots of alternatives to just what we're talking about. What we're just trying to do is we're trying to finish the job that was started in twenty-ten, when the twenty thirty-five plan was voted on and adopted by the planning commissioners and the county commissioners.
And things change over time, don't they?
They do, and that was my second question, is you referred to, there's, we're running short. What are we running short of?
What you're running short of right now, and doesn't want to run answers to the question, by the way, we have a problem, and we make it a couple of different areas. If we had, if we were planning ahead properly, we would have accommodated the sewers and utilities much better than we have. We would have found a way of bonding, I could take it over on Nebraska. You know, my problem is, I see all the stuff that works on them. And so we would have found a different way of handling the financial side of it, so the county's not, I'm out to drive. And, and different sewer systems even. But we don't plan enough, we're just not. And so, of course, we've made some changes, now right for the colony to the cities, and cities have the right for expansion. Now the colonies start taking that back a little bit, all, all of these things are going on. I think that we do a reasonably poor job, we do a good job planning now, really do. I think a poor job going out here. And what that does, it doesn't open enough land out in front. And, uh, all that does is raise the prices and create a problem with availability. And the lower price rates fall off and we can't accommodate retirees because it's not one issue as well. So it's not only density for acre. I think that the need, your first point, to go back to that. I said that I don't plan yet. I've taken the whole county and planned backwards. And I also said that it's important that we accommodate everybody. So I'm not against what you said. That's, that's not the point. The point is, how do you identify where this place is going to be forty years from now? After you're dead and I'm dead, we're gone, and pretty much everybody in the room here, right? What would we have left behind that's been well planned so that you accommodate the two and a half acre thing, some areas? I'm not against that, by the way, but it's not, not under current conversation to stay in place. I don't see that making any sense at all. Uh, however, how do you plan for out here? How do you plan for people with money? How do you plan for, you know, how do you do that? It's, it's a more global approach to planning, and I think that that is the best way. Because there's people in here, I'm promising, that would love to have one lot for all of Southern County.
I'm, I'm sure you're right.
Yeah.
But, you know, and, and I agree with your figure of the end point and run, run it backwards and try to get there from that direction.
Sure.
The county is so incredibly out of bounds at the moment. And we, and the things you have to consider is, is your economy as Southern County going to be well balanced? Do we have enough jobs for people here? We, on any workday of the week, we send fifty thousand of our residents, one quarter of our population goes to another county to go work. So clearly, we're short on jobs in the county. We also want to maintain farmland. Imagine that you want to have enough farmland to feed all the people in the county. Well, that's, that's another consideration. I, I agree with your infrastructure, although, you know, I live on five acres, I have a seven tent, and there are secondary systems that's never failed.
Yeah, but.
Another big problem with the high density is what do you do with all the stormwater? We have real big problems with storm, as a time.
We've been very poorly planned in the past, but the engineers today on the stormwater question, I really got that late. I, I really believed it, uh, but maybe, because, well, they do.
We're still having problems, even with those settlement policies and those things. So, yeah, I, I, you know, it, it's a working process, and I know that's a relatively new thing. But if we're going to be a balanced economy standing on our own two legs, we have to look at all of it. And the fact that we have a lot more people than we have jobs is problematic, I think you would agree.
Well, look, let me do this to you. Uh, if you look at industry, I just finished doing a study at Ford Water Company on their plant out there in Memphis. It'll be ten thousand five hundred jobs. Well, I did that whole property, a hundred mile, uh, ten mile increments or a hundred miles each way from that plant. And I dealt with eighty-eight mayors throughout that whole area, okay? So I majored in it. And, uh, you know how they pull that off? They would not have come if it wanted, one or two reasons. If somebody hadn't taken initiative and put together a huge tract of land. I just was with them in banks in Memphis two weeks ago. They assembled this huge tract of land. Well, they were able to pitch it to Ford. And so they, Ford is rural city, is what they call it. So they, so they have a place where they could go, was very designated for that. I'm suggesting in a, in a master plan, is what I'm talking about, right? That that's part of that. So I'm, I'm for what you're saying. Well, the other thing is, where, if you don't have that, where industry and people that have businesses can come, you're in a crack. Well, if you don't have the people there as well, because we're about to diminish the amount of people, right? Yes, we are, except somewhere else. If you don't have that, and there comes the industry. And so you could turn the corner, and I think that the decisions that you're making, if it's going to mean huge acre tracts, I think it's going to diminish the amount of people in the county, it's going to have an impact down the road of less industry coming, less things coming, less restaurants, everything. It's, it's, it's a major economic situation. So, but in Memphis, and they had a problem with the availability of people. And so what they did, they had, this tract that they had was close to Megaside. But it was close enough to tip the county, right close to Bay County, right off Interstate forty coming in. That there was, if you look at it, plan it, there was enough population going back, uh, into parts of the Memphis market where they had, where employment, that they feel they could pull it off. So all of that is important. So what you're saying is un, unaccreased, it's important in some places. The industrial side, all, all these things are important. I'm just telling you that in order to do this, everybody's job right in front of me here, not even, not behind me, is to, is to be able to accommodate all of that. I don't know how you do it, but, but to come back and take, even a two and a half acre deal, even that, and, and put it in a huge area that you talked, you talked about, I think that it's a, it's going to have serious effect. And it's, it's, it's not, it's not planning the way I understand planning. It's, it's a, it's a, it's a different approach. But does it mean that you don't need some? You see, I think that my approach to saying is to accommodate everybody, and I just honestly don't think that that accommodates almost anybody.
I think we could probably, being a person who came from California.
Yeah.
It's always been hard to buy a house. I had to do it with my brother and another guy, because we couldn't afford.
Really?
Uh, but eventually, and, you know, in California, you're talking about quarter acre lots.
Yeah.
Half, or half acres are a luxury.
Yeah.
But what I wanted to do in the last few minutes we have, is we have a lot of people in the audience, and I wanted to know if there were any questions from,
Yeah.
Anybody here, because I want to respect their time as well. Do we have any questions from the audience?
Yes. So it's California, uh, is that a similar model that we're looking at here, you're implying? That you know of, I mean, it's hard, you say a quarter acre, right?
I, I hope not.
If you tell us, one guy's going to scare me to death, he's, he's fair dust to come.
Well, I, I came here because I wanted to live here, not there. So, but my answer to you would be, no, California's absolutely not the model that I want to see Southern County being, so.
I have a question for the speaker.
Is that?
I, I've heard you, I've heard you say several times, uh, two and a half, five acre tracts are the answer. I agree with that, a hundred percent.
Yeah.
But, uh, and, and you're, you're saying it's going to fill up big spaces of the county, out in the county where only one neighbor can live. That man is going to take on predominantly the majority of the debt for that area, that type of thing.
I, I have a question. Uh, if, if we think we're losing too much space in the county with the current sun, how is it that Nashville has twenty-five foot wide, fifty feet deep lots, that's their smallest lot?
Yeah.
Literally, uh, twelve hundred and fifty foot. Uh, and they still have sixty-four percent of their county unincorporated. So it's undeveloped land, and they don't see that. So, and I don't think that, I'm, I'm with you, I don't think the big lots are any answer at all. Um, I think density should be in the cities, and we should stop building major subdivisions in the county.
Well, see, all of that is good to be, stop building. So, let me, let me tell you, see, I, I'm, I'm not trying to accommodate if, if I, or, I'm trying to look at everything, accommodate everybody. And, and, and I'm, and I'm telling you that, like, I always come to a conclusion, if you have to accommodate the county, it has finances. You have to do it, and you have to accommodate the people who own the land. How, how can we get where you're right to sell land? We can't, we can't do that. But that's, I, I can't do that. Uh, personally, I think socially, I, I can't do that. And, and then I have to accommodate the old people who, who spent all the money to, to get the county itself. Why would we now tell them what they can't do, where they can't live? What's, they have that big, have that big lot, how is saying is that? And with other kids, I appreciate them, if you did the place where you got to get out of college, if you could move right into the garage over here, who, who would help accomplish this garage? Or, or the county. Or the county. And then, and then we get the retirees, and I'm not going to, but the grandkids are the company. So, uh, listen, I'm not for any one or two, I would say, you have to accommodate all, you got it?
From the next player's standpoint, look, the wall, if you're saying Williamson County is going to get, and I, I, I've seen that coming in Williamson County.
Oh, yeah, it's coming.
That, that square we got up there.
Yeah.
Will be two and a half times bigger if we go to two and a half acre tract. No, five acre tracts, it'll be five times bigger. So explain to us what Williamson County, what you project, Bruce County.
Well, I, I, I look, I, I love the there, with the company, okay? Consider a friend, all that, I would have a conversation about, so we could talk about here. And I'm not going to get into that private conversation. But, uh, we had to come to a place of, he believes that we can live in that on one lot, one house for five acres is, is a good situation. And my approach economically is that we're coming to a problem down the road where that one house cannot sustain. But today, there are one lot per acre. Five houses are going to pay for roads and everything else, schools and all of that. What they're about to let one house try to pay for down the road, at six, seven, eight years down the road, they're going to get a wall, and they're not going to have the money, and we have to raise the prices. Not only that, with your comment, the string of prices of the homes went up, and what do we do? We told them, retire, we have stuff that you have to leave. We've really done that now. I, I cannot begin to tell you, I go to church over here, and I'm, you should see the people that don't know what to do. They're just trying not to even decide because they can't stay there, they want to move down. We remove completely, move down market. And so we tell them, go to Rhode Island, right? You, well, we don't know if we want to go to Rhode Island, we don't, we're not close to a hairdresser, we're not close to a church, we're not close to a grocery, we don't know, we don't know roads. Why would you tell us to leave? We're the ones that put this county in place. I guess you see, right, in, uh, in, 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 I think that maybe I go over. And I, and I'm seeing it through a different set of glasses today that I've never seen on my. And I think that we do a loss extended job with the retirement market. I just honestly, and I've said it ten more times, and I think that the decision of putting people in a bigger acreage is a enormous mistake. But it doesn't mean you don't need it. You've got to have it in front of people who do want that. There are people who want that. I'm not for a particular thing. You have to plan all the pieces. And I'll tell you something else, if you're planning, let's suppose, like, if you had, you have a tract of land right up in your six, your border, right? That's where you live. Well, there's another tract of land up there. You, you, the people who are there, when you do it, who master plan, you have to accommodate that. If they're all sending a ten acre tract of land, you have to accommodate that. But I'll tell you what else you have to do. You have to find a way of accommodating those that are going to move down out of the tracks at a future time. And that is the real trick. I'm working with a city now to try to figure out how to pull that off, and we're general conversation. Anyway, I'm sorry.
No, thank you, and we are out of time, we have to get into our regular.
I got one question.
Oh, okay, one more.
One last one. I see a lot of them ordering a grab here, right? If you plan on building over one or five houses in the next year, you're going to drink. If it's going to be less than ten, you're going to drink. Less than ten houses, if you're going to build less than ten houses in the next year. I think that that becomes your identity question for the county, Mr. Fox. It's just, they're not really, not identity in the county.
Yeah, let me, let me just touch, that issue, just, you know, I'll, I'll put. Uh, there is a place for apartments, it's not everywhere, okay? But historically, when we've done apartments, we said, if here's the interstate, the apartments go next to the interstate, they can pick up the noise. And right next to the apartment, next to the interstate, is little cheap houses. And then a little more expensive, a little more expensive, a little more expensive, and we put the people money in the woods. We put the poor people next to the interstate. That's how we sold them. That is absolutely asinine, and irritates me to no end. That we are so selective that the people who follow money can decide where the poor people are going to have to, to live in the jungle. I, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not saying that you don't have that place for high end, and, and I, I, I agree with that. But our approach to planning is to accommodate everybody and make them okay. Not stuff them into a box somewhere. I'm just telling you now, to, to go ahead and to have all too many of the big lots. I think there's a place where we have to, um, sit down.
Thank you very much, Mr. Fox. Uh, maybe we can take a maximum five minute break before we start our regular meeting.
[Inaudible]
We're gonna start on the meeting, so if you have conversations for the sake of our board. Okay, I'm calling to order this meeting. Uh, and, uh, we will, uh, we have all members here. And, uh, I would see a motion, uh, for approval admitted. Okay, we have, uh, Chrissy and Deborah have said, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Approve. Approval of the April twenty twenty four agenda. Motion. Chris Miller, motion.
Senator.
Okay. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Approve. Okay, we have public comments for items on the agenda on acquiring a public hearing. But our first is a public hearing.
Yes, sir, and we have something to sign this with, which we will do after the staff presentation.
Okay.
We don't have anybody signed up for anything else.
Okay, then, uh, great, uh, then why don't you go ahead and do the staff presentation, Josh and.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The, uh, the first item on the agenda is Crane, Scotty Parker, P U D, rezoning, uh, and concept title, broker. Uh, this is a fixed property located on Scotty Parker Road, uh, just north of the city, north of the city of Galton. Um, property is a rural residential, uh, the lot size is shown on the ancestors site. We know everybody, everything that's on the ancestors site is on their river as playing, and it's there. Uh, this for informational purposes, they, there's a disclaimer in that page, and so sometimes it's the law. Uh, this property shows it as forty acres, it's actually forty one point three seven acres per the survey. Uh, the applicant is Jared Crane, is the smoothest application, uh, property owner, as you see up there, Ron, and the neighbor. Uh, what they're saying to do is rezone the subject property to do construction services uses, uh, on it. Uh, they're represented by green lid design, uh, do join property number five, certified by my own, uh, as per actual resolution. And it was advertised in the Galton, they were supposed to stand on March the twenty eighth. Uh, this is a plan development, there's a good bit of public involvement, that kind of thing that goes in this process, if I talk about it. First of all, there's, uh, this is the area of the subject property, as you see, it's an undeveloped site. Uh, it is traversed by, by, uh, some drainage features here, uh, there's a creek that goes through the property, some of the flood plain. Uh, you can see it is bordered by, by three rows. Uh, we have, uh, Scotty Parker Road here, which is the old State Route on that. Uh, Frencher Lane up here to the door, and the old Douglas Road here, so it's got a good bit of road drainage. This is a, to be honest, it is a highly developed site in a lot of different ways, uh, because with all the road drainage. Uh, the billboard here is located on. Uh, this is just kinda, pull it back a little bit, to find a little more context, the subject property where it is. Here's the new highway on that, as you can see, there's Scotty Parker Road, just oriented. Uh, that's an old, uh, oh, that's an quarry, uh, a temporary quarry that is operated as part of your project, it's in there. Uh, this is, uh, again, as I mentioned, there's some of the property that has flood zones hanging within it. And so, this is zone A, where, um, floodlands approximately, they're not, they're not proposing any construction. I don't believe we have, uh, any of the flood zones that are shown here on the, on the, on the map. But that's all, the same thing, the figures are, this is open plan. Um, look at that zoning context. Uh, it's, it's located, I think, flood proximity, a good bit of development has been removed over the years. Uh, some stuff relative to recently, uh, there's some, uh, plenty of developments. This, this green here is, is planned development, is, is what that zoning is. Uh, there's, you know, there's everything from storage, this is a very significant commercial development. They got it back in like twenty eighteen around here, uh, that's under fruition at this time. Uh, the staff here is a landscape company, and yet many stores and warehousing, uh, there's a, and this, right, there's a light that must release on the property. Uh, and again, there's some smothered commercial, that's, uh, commercial services, is the, the large, so. Good bit of commercial zoning, public cemetery right here, that's a, a longstanding, uh, business park after the board was on the appeals, it was granted many years ago. Uh, and so, it's in proximity to a number of, of non-residential uses, it doesn't join them, it is close to them. This area over here is the city of Galton, this is the meadow development, the folks mine over from a few years ago. Um, for that, it's supposed to be an industrial park for the county, a very significant industrial park. They didn't go to traditional, and so right now it's a, a significant residential subdivision, a little bit of a lot, I believe, in the city. Uh, this is the, uh, the public notice that was in the paper, in, on March twenty eighth, filling that zoning requirement that we have, a public notice in the newspaper. Um, with the, all the public notice kinda summarizes what we required, explaining that there was a neighbor who'd be dead cell on paperwork fifteen. As for check time, there's only a resolution, uh, then we will rezone a note of the patient signed, placed along the road range. Um, the joint property numbers were sent certified letters related to this hearing, uh, and it was out of that paper. Uh, this is that public notice that the, uh, I have the mail out there, body, including the county, that are required to notify us about the, the public hearing. Uh, so that we can have somebody there, county engineers that would put in that, uh, that particular making of the head, uh, on paperwork fifteen. And everybody's summary here, uh, there, there's a good bit of, good bit of, uh, questions and, and comments and concerns at the meeting, um, and that. To their greater, they haven't worked to try to address those, as best they can, I should do, so don't worry about that kind of thing. Uh, this is just kinda go through the sheets of the, of the plan. We have a few, a few items that are outstanding comments and some questions still that we have on, on the plan sheets. Just went through a couple rounds of revisions, uh, wasn't really quite where everything was addressed. And they still have some sheets that are, that are showing special exceptions. Uh, this was initially filed as a, as an application to board zone appeals a number of months ago, and that was withdrawn. So we just have some minor, minor things like that that we can do with the package. Uh, there's formatting issues with, and so it's a little bit hard to read on some of this. If you zoom into the type, uh, that's a lot easier to read, but we're trying to get the broader view, it's, it's, it's not, not particularly visual. But this is overall concept land, this is a required plan sheet, uh, when, when you turn in a plan development to the county. Uh, and what they got here is, uh, the yellow is the buildings that propose, and we'll get into what they tell on those in just a minute. Uh, but there's, this is divided across four tracks, uh, about ten acres each, here taking, uh, the, the. Blue is, is parking, is, is, uh, that's resurface, so it's like, well, it's a, 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 some, a little bit of asphalt and concrete part of that kind of thing. Um, and then there are map and soil areas, there's setting periods, we didn't have been approved setting the map, uh, sign on soils just yet, but I, I've been helping the, the soil work ahead, and so there is a setting slot to show the reach of these, so these are what I back there, so like. Um, side data table, uh, this is required information, it breaks down the buildings by square footage, it's flat, so overall square footage. Uh, there's some issues with the parking calculations, I don't know, uh, there's, it says there's only ten spots proposed for the, the project. I think there's probably closer to sixty percent or something like that, if you count them. Uh, so that's, that's a kind of, it would need to be addressed, any revisions. Uh, this is track one, again, parking here for employees, and I talked a little bit more about the number of employees and that kind of thing in a minute. Uh, as we look through it, there's still some, some other comments, is that they have their, their signage, but this is back here. Uh, any questions about what was the closer to the ground? Uh, track two, uh, well, I'll talk about track one. Um, this, this particular track is supposed to be, uh, occupied by Crane Law here, um, which is stated on here as having about, um, about thirty employees, yeah, thirty employees. And they provide some detail, uh, that was, that was in the master plan, we can go through all that, about the scope of operation, the power of operation, and that thing. Uh, track two, um, it's tri- tri-star excavation, um, two buildings on this particular property as well. Track three, uh, just has one building, that would be south concrete, this is the northern most of the property. And, and this, probably, uh, up here before we got the notice, some comments, I think there's residents up here that had some concerns. And like I said, they, they did shift the building, I believe, a bit to the side further, uh, from what was originally proposed. And then track four is back there in the back, and there's nothing proposed for that. Essentially, that's gonna remain as a pasture, which is open space, uh, at this time.
Would it, would it be part of the zone?
Yes, sir, and so if they wanted to do something different with it, like, uh, divide a bit of residential lots or something like that, that would require amendment to the plan.
Okay.
And so this is overall landscape layout, provides a good, good, good idea with it proposed in the plan. You see that there are a lot of landings proposed along the road, uh, very significant landings that are up here. Uh, they've done a pretty good job of buffering this, destroying the property lines as best as they can. Moving that building as far away as they can, they got to say fairly reasonable distance from the setting area, so, but they shifted it down here, but. And there's just detail of the landscape elements that they turned in here. And they provide a photo back to lighting plans, um, there's a, you can't tell that those little dots are tiny tiny numbers. And what they do is they, they, they show the, the luminance, the amount of, of light that's being reflected, uh, when the lights are on at night, uh, for these, these different facilities. Uh, and it's got a big zero at the property line, basically is what we, what we wanna see, and that's, that's what they're showing. They got a whole page about those lighting plans, they showed the lighting impacts off site, which is, which is what you wanna see on top of that. Um, architectural elevations, uh, this is one I've had conversations with, with, with Mr. Lee that turned this in. Um, you know, uh, just to be, to be honest, this is not, the, the architecture that's proposed on this is probably not, uh, uh, the quality of some other things that we've seen submitted. Uh, we've got an active application, uh, that was back before county commission last night, it's been for back to planning that, um, it's proposed a very similar construction, several services, five uses, it's not all that far from here. And, uh, just to be, to be honest, the, the level of architecture quality that they're proposing is, is on another level from, from this. Uh, they just know that it's basically all proposed, there's no, no setting enhancements or anything for what's proposed. And so, uh, this was noted as a staff comment, um, and so there might be more conversations with the applicant that was represented about, about what they wanna, what they wanna do here, and what the planning commission we can't commission accept.
Do, do we actually have a standard?
Within, within the context of a plan development, what we've always looked at is that, that there's, uh, it's a rezoning, there's significant entitlements. Uh, we've, we've had in the past, pre-explanation commission particularly, very lengthy discussions about status and that kind of thing. And, um, you know, whether, you know, briefed and what kind of brief, and those kinds of things that, that, that you guys wanna see. And so, you know, if, if there's nothing part of that necessarily, but if, if the planning commission is okay with building, I don't think they're saying that the city couldn't accept that, but, uh, I don't think it's at the level, it's not the same standard of what's been required in that. It's more of architectural elevations. So, um, with our comprehensive plan, uh, this, this fixed property is, is really close to some of these, uh, uh, employment center, which is this, this purple area here, highway services, um, area here, um, but it's, it's located just in the north of that, and there's the cemetery, and there's the green, which is construction. Um, and it has, it does have to be located in the, the rural place type, that's where it's shown for our comprehensive plan. Um, now, it doesn't, you know, the way our plan is structured, it doesn't really talk about the, the, uh, appropriateness of commercial uses and that kind of thing, in these contexts, um, uh, they encourage rural preservation and those kind of things. But there's nothing in, in here, it's not, it's not documented, it says you can't have commercial uses in the rural place type or anything. Um, it just, it doesn't seem to encourage a whole lot of it, not the way that you do, um, the way that it does in, in, uh, you know, in some of these other. um, the way that it does in, you know, in some of these other place types, they end in the vicinity. Um, that says, like I said, this is on a good road, a former state route and that kind of thing. And it is a planning development that they're requesting and appropriate for. And so if they design the site in a way that's compatible with the county commission, county commission feels like it's appropriate, um, there's nothing in the contract on this that's, that's certainly inappropriate. Um, as far as drainage, uh, that they're, they did have conceptual bio-retention areas. Like we talked about the county tradition meeting last night, this is not the state where we have detailed construction plans and know exactly what's going to be built, um, to the, to the square, to the linear foot. Uh, but they do have that, that is conceptually depicted on there where they can catch the drainage from the, the parking areas and that kind of thing. That was a significant, uh, comment that came up, I believe, and they put big pieces in sense to park quality and that kind of thing. They would need to address that. Uh, again, there's part of it is in the floodplain. They're proposing leave the floodplain alone, um, not doing fill or anything in the floodplain, I believe. Uh, in the future, if the rezoning is approved, they would need to come back with a, a site plan application and, uh, all, all the construction plans and everything that we have to have at that stage. Um, as far as roads, again, this is located on Scotty Parker Road, has several other road accesses, uh, Brager Lane, other than this road. Uh, there's no maxed out, I'm, I pointed this out earlier, but they're not proposing to put anything at all out on the Brager Lane. Um, and there are not, there's not anything proposed along those either. And so, uh, when this plan initially first came up, they did have some, some stuff coming out on, one of these came out on the Brager Lane at the time. And we, we really directed up to, to try to turn that around before Scotty Parker Road and waiting for the level was true. Scotty Parker Road is likely adequate to accommodate this use again as a state road and its arterial roadway. Um, we, there was some confusion and some, some questions. We had questions for the, for the advocate representative, for, for folks agreeing that about whether traffic study was going to be needed. Um, the initial submittal that they turned in, folks turned in, board was on appeal was called for about ninety employees at this location, uh, which is, which is going to trigger, uh, over a hundred big hours of traffic for that, so it's AM, PM, midnight. Uh, so traffic study was probably going to be required, uh, and so we, we asked for one. And then the recent middle that came back is forty-six employees. So we had some questions about is it ninety employees or forty-six employees or how are we getting it? How are we getting to those numbers? I'd say anything is, has been handed or anything, but we just had questions about how, how big is this going to be, how big people and that kind of thing. So we didn't really ever hear a resolution on that. And that was, this is the, uh, we got from Mr. Lee. They, they revised, revised the plans and actually traffic analysis. Um, this is that third generation where the engineer that they have with the traffic. Basically, all they said in that is that a traffic study wasn't one for regulations based on the number of employees and the square footage of the building to a road. And again, even if one was required, getting a traffic study, sometimes you have to turn one in because it's just required, but, um, they use a hundred, a hundred employees. It's not that big a use on the scheme of things and on a road like Scott Parker Road. It may, it'd be hard to imagine in that particular area that you're going to, it's going to trigger improvements. But sometimes, uh, it's a correct second to a traffic study is to, to make sure. Um, and so, so, uh, whether that will come back, if it need, they need, they need to be done, that is, is the hard question. Uh, they didn't turn in the water, but the letter, um, what, what the letter says is that public, public water is available. However, it, it, it states that there are significant requirements that are going to be needed in order to provide fire protection via hydrants. Um, these structures, some of them are pretty good size, twenty, twenty-three thousand square feet, um, something that one of them is about twelve thousand square feet. Um, and so, uh, uh, there, so these make sure they're sprinkled requirements and that kind of thing depending on what they have going on outside of the buildings. Um, and they did request sprinkling loads, I believe, on all house utilities. I'm talking to Mr. Lee about that. I don't know if he's looked into whether these many buildings need to be sprinkled. If we have an answer for that here, but that was a question that we had. Um, again, as I mentioned, that, with, with the soul scientist, they mapped the, the souls area. Um, we didn't, we didn't get that, uh, the subject soul mapped, uh, that's signed off by the, uh, by the soul scientist. Uh, they did turn that up. This is, this is what they turned in for an exceptional scientific plan. Again, to look at, uh, that other application that we have that's active now, it's proposing some construction set of services used for them. Very robust, uh, plan sheet, uh, showing signage, which is a line of escape and that kind of thing. So this, this isn't quite the best idea. Um, we, we took some photos. These photos are a little old, uh, but the, it just, what's, what's out there is just a, it's just a picture, basically. This is what it is along Scotty Parker Road here is where these pictures are taken from. So, uh, zoning met, and the standards, we have nine of these in the, in the zoning code. Um, the first of, the first which is whether it is consistently a county comprehensive plan. Um, it is shown at the rural place site, um, that, as I mentioned, it doesn't necessarily say you can't do commercial uses and that kind of thing. It's not strongly encouraged, uh, but this is in, in close proximity to the other areas where you do have a, a really emerging non-residential development pattern. Um, and, and where that is really encouraged just to the south by the conflict. Um, number two, whether there are changes in conditions that require the amendment. Uh, again, that non-residential activity center is merged in the south of this location. And so, um, it, 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 uh, things are happening down there and we continue to be more interested in that little area. And so that, that is not the very amount of this application. Uh, three, is it a risk that demonstrated to be made? Uh, this is one of those things that now we had to get on that, but would it be one opening these businesses out here if there wasn't a link for it essentially? Uh, four, uh, is it compatible with existing and proposed uses surrounding it? Is it from the appropriate zoning district for the, the lane? Um, so this is the long form, one oh nine, old one oh nine, which is for arterial roadway, uh, pre-commercial uses to the south. It is a land unit development, so you know exactly what you're getting, but very closely limited with, what they're proposing to do. There's not a whole lot of, um, wild and crazy proposed uses that could, that could potentially go out here. So, um, so it is, it is something that, that we do see in destruction service and common, common use type out in, in the county. Um, six, would it encourage development prior to the availability of necessary services? Water is available, subject is available, Scotty Parker Road in front of it. Um, again, hydrants and that kind of thing are very limited. It's going to be very difficult and expensive to, to get hydrants and salt service, provide house utilities, sprinkling this structure, like in the garage, you know, that would require my code. Uh, seven, would it result in the creation of an isolated zoning district unrelated to adjacent, that's your having zoning districts? That would create a flood district with very specific allowable uses. And again, there are partial uses down in the south and the vicinity of the project. They don't join it, but they are in the vicinity. Um, eight, would it result in significant adverse impacts on the property values? We've not, uh, rounded up around this. We've not received any, any appraisals. There's a court case that says, um, if you wanted to use, uh, immediate issue in real estate values as your justification, if denied subsequently, you gotta have, uh, you gotta expert testimony, which is a appraisal, so we haven't got anything like that. Uh, nine, would it, uh, it would result in adverse impacts to the natural environment? Exactly that kind of thing. And so we don't anticipate any negative impacts to the natural environment. They provided a lot of plans that you acquired. Uh, they have to address long water on site. Subject will have to be handled on site. Uh, they've got a preliminary grading plan, just here showing how the lots have it all looking. Um, and the access to the site is, is addressed by the advocate and it looks like it could be done safely as well. Um, so next steps, at this stage, the planning commission is being asked to make a recommendation to the county commission on this rezoning request, which is required by state law. Uh, after the planning commission makes a recommendation, it'll be legislated for two readings and then the full county commission will vote. And as the county commission approves the rezoning, then it'll be rezoned and, and they'll need to turn up a site lane with all the, all the engineering components and everything else that can be. So to share those technical motions on the screen to provide a positive recommendation to the county commission, or a negative recommendation or to defer to additional information that's required. And that concludes my presentation. And as I mentioned, this is a public hearing, that would be someone to speak.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, the first person we have signed up to speak is Stephanie Wilkes, seventy sixty-five Scotty, Scotty Parker Road.
So do I have to do?
Please.
Okay, so my name is Stephanie Wilkes and I live at seventeen sixty-five Scott Parker Road, which is a property that is immediately to the north of this proposed site. So my property line would be sharing a property line with the Stout Senet Company.
That's the one that they moved the building for?
They did move the building. It's further, I'm looking at the plans, I had the plans before the plans. It's, it's, it's in further a little south, but it's up closer to Scott Parker. Um, and then to, between that and my property line is a bio-retention pond area. My question is, I don't really understand what that is. Can you tell me that? You may have addressed it, but I was having a little trouble hearing it.
Yes, so it's a, it's a detention facility, basically is, is what it is. So it's, uh, it, it's intended to capture this small water that runs off of the site, quantity wise, at least to some extent. Um, but the primary function of it is to capture any, any water that's leaving the site and to filter out the injuries and the, the pollutants that are in that water. Our permit with the state, um, requires that we require that they have captured as the first engine of rainwater that leaves the site. That's going to that bio-retention facility and they filter it out and, uh, and leave the site as clean water. That's, that's what that facility is. I'm assuming they put that there because that's the path of the natural drain as, as it leaves the property or at least, or at least part of the property.
And it's in the water flow southward, correct?
Um, I'd have to defer to the, to the advocate on, on the direction of flow there.
I, I think some of it will flow to me. And so when you say that this is going to filter the water, what, what mechanism does that? Is it like a hole or is it like wet lens or I, I don't understand exactly what filters the water?
Uh, it's also on something that was chairman, they, they have, they fill it with, uh, it's called media, filter media, which is an extremely expensive kind of mulch that they, that they have about basically, it's a special type of mulch that's approved by, by the state. And then how they, they make it, uh, they, they trim it in, they build, they basically build ponds and it has, uh, on the bottom, it's like PVC pipes and that kind of thing or the water filters and could, and PVC pipes. And then they hold the top of that, they put this filter media, which is like mulch basically. And then they do planting within it. They do natural plantings that are drought resistant and that kind of thing within it. And so it looks like a little detention pond with shrubs and stuff like that.
So this is really not anything to do with the subject systems. This is just for the, for the storm water.
The, this is the system water, that's right, storm water.
Okay. Um, well, my family has, has been at this address for over fifty years. Now, I, I was, we moved there when I was four and I have not lived there continuously, but my parents have and I am back there now. And there is some commercial development on Scotty Parker between the new one oh nine and there we are. The, the biggest development is the cemetery, which has been there, I think, before we even, the cemetery's been there forever. So everybody's just, the cemetery is just there. And the closest development to this land is a church. And between the church and this particular parcel of land is forty acres that's used as crop, just different crops at this point in time. At one point in time, there were cows there, but there are crops there. So once you pass the cemetery and you pass the church, you've gone to rural farmland. And the buzzword in the county seems to be now about rural preservation, preserving the farmland in the county. And I went and looked at the map and the development office and this particular parcel of land, if the rural preservation, um, motion carries, would be the first parcel of land in the rural preservation area. So my question as a resident there is if we are really wanting to preserve our rural farmland, why are we putting three businesses on our rural farmland? Some of them having those buildings that are, I think you said in excess of thirty thousand square foot and we're having fifty employees or a hundred employees, I don't know which. And even if it's fifty, at this point in time, I'm an entrepreneur and I know as a business person, you're wanting your business to grow, therefore you're wanting more employees, you're wanting more equipment, you're, you're wanting to become bigger and bigger. And they're situating these businesses on ten acres a piece. So obviously there is, I would think, expecting to grow. So as a resident, it does not seem like it is sitting in our neighborhood. And I will say, our neighborhood does not seem to be here enforced tonight because I think they've kind of gotten, they've been, they've been trying to do this and trying to do this since December and they recognize many people here, but we have several Facebook groups and I have not talked to anyone in the neighborhood that thinks that this is something that is in keeping of what we need in our neighborhood. And the road that we're talking about is a fairly decent road. I mean, it used to be a state highway until the new road was built. But when you get to the end of Scotty Parker and you get to one oh nine, that is the exchange that they put the turn lane and you have to go down and turn around and do all of the different things because those teenagers were killed at all one oh nine and, or we have Scotty, well, Scotty Parker and the new one oh nine. So they, they, I don't know how to explain to you what they did down there, but it's, it's very confusing what they've done. You have, if you're coming from town, you can turn onto Scotty Parker where this side could be. But if you're coming, and if you're coming from Portland, you can do that. But you have to get into, it's, it's, it's just very confusing. So we're talking about employees coming to that intersection and coming out on the three eighty-six where people are coming from Portland, coming down and they're going to have to merge onto that. You're going to have heavy equipment urging onto, to there and, and lots of trailers. So I think that them accessing the new road from Scotty Parker is where we'll have traffic issues more so than on Scotty Parker. So we're, all connects up down there. So that's that. And I will say that they did do the things that we asked them to do. They tried to do that. They put the screening on Scotty Parker, but that still does not, it will never be rural farmland again. We'll have lots of landscaping, we'll have some signs and it may be attractive, but it's not going to be rural farmland and it's not going to be residential. And the neighborhood really feels strongly that it should be residential. And the comment that we have more businesses down the road from us, so it's, it's coming to us makes us even more nervous because we feel like that's what is trying to happen, that we're, they're wanting to make our area, uh, from residential more to a commercial area and we feel like it should maintain the rural atmosphere that it is. So going back to the rural preservation, if this happens and rural preservation passes, I would be the first one in line for rural preservation with my property and I'll be sitting with three businesses beside me. And I somehow or another think that, that all of that is going to make a complete impact value of my property. So that's great.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, the next person we have to speak is Karen Collier Bruce.
Karen.
I, I was trying to have Josh explain the... Is that, is that something that we should suspend the rules when that happens?
Um, or do we? It, it's probably for him, he should have did Q and A during, during the public comment. Um, if they, if they have a couple of questions, then I'll give them to write them down and try to answer them after, so that would be fine. And how y'all want to handle it, so I'll see.
Hello, my name is Karen Collier Bruce. My husband and I live at two hundred Brager Lane. We've lived there for thirty years. We love our country. We love our countryside and we love what we see in the land. My father-in-law, Russell Bruce, he's not here. He is in here, where, and he wanted me to say that he lives at one oh six Brager Lane. And this commercial development is going to be right across the road from Brager Lane and I'll be looking at the backside of the concrete business and probably part of the excavating business also. We don't think that this lane is sitting there ready to have these buildings magically appear. It's going to take days and weeks of excavating it this right. There's going to be noise and there's going to be disturbances and there's going to be something that's never going to be our countryside again. Because once this is done, then it's going to have the businesses open. We're going to have violent traffic and we're going to have the noise. And I know they're going to put up the privacy plans, but it is still going to be something that is not going to be the countryside that we look out and see. that is not going to be the countryside that we look out and see. I just feel that this is not the proper location. I mean, I'm, all four people and their partners and their money and businesses, we even have our own plan of business to hold. But I just don't feel this, let's fly forward, and me and our family, we have to do this. Thank you.
Thank you.
I assume that's, that's my first line, I don't know if she...
Yeah, Mr. Lee.
Mr. Lee, is there anything you'd like to say about the property that you want for us?
Yes, thank you all. And I will say that the neighbors have been very respectful. Hopefully, we worked well with them, accommodating the request, and still continue to do that if there's things tonight, that there's a conversation that we can do to, unfortunately, we can't, we're losing farmland for our proposition here tonight, but if there are things that we can do to mitigate it, they certainly have to do so. The, Josh did point out several typos in our work, and I apologize, it's not how we're going to put out. I think the exhibit's, understanding themselves, because we're proposing, we'll fix the typos before we get further down the road. The water improvements, let me touch on that, so. White House explained that, just to the north of this property, they have a booster pond. So if you recall, the side that only brought stores was voted, voted in. That side is just to the north of us, and it's going to get its water, and it has fire protection. This side does not, because there's a booster pump there that's just to the north of this property. I can't speak for White House in totality, but I didn't get the impression that this section will have fire protection anytime soon, because it would require real pay in that compensation, so you can keep those things alive, let's make a decision. The largest building at twenty-plus thousand square feet or not, if you look at the architectural plan of that, the majority of that building is open air, or it's, it's only, has a roof and two sides, both sides open, so it's basically just a covering for equipment, not enclosed. So mostly enclosed spaces, five, six thousand square feet. I am giving some confirmation of an architect, and this is, the code is outside my purview of whether or not the park is screened, but you can see that this is right here, the bulk of it is, is open air. The signs were happy to be, but the signs plan, I really intend to use signs, but we feel like it takes a quarter to keep it planned, just in case they want to keep that some comfort, some comfort that we'll get, which is what we're looking for. And mostly the, again, the stormwater for this site, we have preserved the street bumpers, we have preserves that have wetlands, but not, but that's easier to flood plain. And having such large sites, we're going to be able to accommodate stormwater very easily, as you can see most, especially the upper two tracks, no over seventy percent of it's going to remain untouched. The lower track, maybe more material, now some of that parked a lot, but still, fifty percent of that is still open. The employee count in territory, I have to explain the discrepancy in that. If you look at the damage to our traffic, our trade generation, that trade generation was created prior to our settlement. So we reported the numbers given to us, and that's why territory is explaining to you what is going on in his head, and he was giving those employee counts. And I'll let him explain that. And we're happy to enter into discussions about the architecture that was brought up, and we're prepared to have that discussed as well.
Okay, my name is Jerry, and I'm an advocate. And so where I was going with the, we are, we, I want to be very clear, we do not sell, we are in a construction business, for example, a landscape and an excavation and a concrete, but we don't sell, we don't make concrete, we do not have things that we sell out of these places. There will not be retail volume coming in. This is simply a place for us, a few offices in our front buildings for our staff to come back and generate estimates, our office manager to invoice, things like that, but we do not have customers coming to our site and leaving every day. We do however, have a huge need for a place to keep our equipment, and we do have a large need for a place for our guys to come, park in the morning, get in our trucks, so we house in these buildings, and leave today at a reasonable time, come back at a reasonable time, and other than that, it's very quiet, very, it's very quiet all day, you know, and it's not loud in the mornings, it's just people are going to pull in, they're parked in, clock in, get their equipment and leave. That being said, we also have seven, this is where the discrepancy came, in our employee count. Yes, we do have nearly ninety employees covered. And one time I answered that, I was not trying to be not honest, but not ninety people coming to our site every day. We have a large number of crews that go directly to their site and drive, too, they're not required, that'll need to come, it's actually a waste of our money for them to come to and clock in and leave, so we now have iPads, things that they can go to the site, clock in on their iPad, they can clock out, save us time, money, energy, and them as far as coming to a job. And so because we are so out in the community working, it's a very honest representation that what the forty-five count is honest and correct to the actual people that have become there. And then even furthermore, that is, most of our guys are carpentry, so you have two, three, four men in a truck, that takes down one vehicle. And so while yes, we do want to allow this growth there, I would venture to say that it's really probably more like twenty vehicles a day that actually come to these sites. And that varies day to day, but that's very close. And so while we do have what looks like a large parking lot shown there, it's spaces of odd, we, I'm very open to accommodating what we need to accommodate, but I did not want to be dishonest, and they say, oh, you don't have everybody parking parked a lot, because I do want to do this right. I've been waiting for twenty-eight years to do this project, and so, you know, I finally found a site that I think fits great at. Furthermore, the, we are farmers, we run already fifteen hundred acres in Southern County, that we run catalog, and we have horses, and we are going to put cattle down in this bottom, this ten acre bottom, keep using this rural, or that, there's a lot of land, probably can't tell, but there's still a lot of land left on this plot. We don't want to mow it, we're going to roll the rolls of hay in those areas. So we're stuck in a hard place between, we're not industrial, we're more closer to farming and agriculture than we are industrial, so that's where this place fits, whereas we do not long in industrial park. Matter of fact, I don't even think we'd give it in an industrial park, located, so, but that's the difficulty, the discrepancy, so I think I'm going to answer that.
The landscape business, is that moly launch, or is that construction insulation? Do you...
All of it.
All of it above, okay. So you, you could be storing small trees, plants in the parking lot, or...
We, we could be for a, for a small period of time, we do not grow our own plants, we do not sell, we do not have a nursery, we buy everything from wholesalers, we've been doing that for twenty-five years, so I don't have time to take care of it.
Is generally open to the site?
Yes.
But you do have borrowers and...
Yes, but those will be all inside.
Okay. Thanks. Any questions for the advocate?
I don't know, Sharon, so have you already heard this is property, or is it contingent of harm? At least I've seen it.
At least under contract. But right now, it's under contract, not a purchase, it's, this stuff is in play.
But is it, you have a contingency for...
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, any other discussion? I'll take those.
A couple things, obviously, the neighborhood, I'm going to be with it, and understanding of who are looking at it, so now I look at everything. The architecture or materials on it just tenders for me, I think it's going to need to revisit, so I don't know, maybe we need to, a little more time to see, but maybe enough of something a little fair. I just, you know, it's probably going to be a, maybe for the full commission, it's not, and they're probably just nursing it back to us. So this, maybe, I see the option, maybe defer this for maybe a little more information on maybe, I mean, that's telling me else, maybe that's kind of where I'll go, and there's a few questions that are...
So is that a motion, or...
Yeah.
To defer?
Sure, just my question.
Okay. We have a motion to defer, there's second on that. Second by Commissioner Holmes. Any discussion on the motion?
Well, I'll just make a comment, really. I don't, I don't mind this plan. I mean, I think the business is good, and I think that, I feel like that they would be a good neighbor, I think they're trying. I think the traffic is less than what it would be for residential. So I'm okay with that, but I think, like with Commissioner Holmes, we might need to bump that up just a hair. And hopefully, that sets the rest of the neighbors and, you know, can reach out, and that will happen to be in there.
Yeah, I, I understand exactly where you're at, but I mean, they are going through some change for P D. Anybody who was at the previous workshop heard me talk about how short we are of jobs in this county. You've got to put those businesses somewhere, and I, I don't want to see the farmland behind my house turning into an industrial, but I understand that people have property rights. So this is a difficult discussion, and I, I think maybe having time to consider and go out, maybe talk to the neighbors is a, is a good thing. Plus, I think you're right, I think sheet metal buildings are very common, but at some point, they just become eyesores, and perhaps there is a low-cost way to make these more attractive, especially since the ones that are open are open. So that's, that's what I have to say about, anybody else have any comments?
Just a quick comment.
Sure.
The friends are also longtime residents of Southern County, so they are, they live and work here, which is also kind of what we're looking for.
Right.
And like I said, I feel like that all of those things together would make them decent.
Yeah, and you're correct, and the one thing you said is, I mean, you can have a few trucks pull in and pull out in the morning, or you can have school buses, and, I mean, in some aspects, it's a bit of poison, so, you know, ultimately, something will happen with the land, whether it's housing or because the person who's selling the land wants to sell it, so. Anyway, enough said about that.
I just have one question, Josh. Does the, is the kind of onus of the quality of the building fall on the planning committee, or is that something more on the building inspection type of department?
No, it's, I mean, I'm just a question, the state, I would say it's, onus of that is on the, I mean, it's a, it's a, it's a, to provide you guys with a product that looks good, that's going to be an asset visually in the state, because the neighborhood, that's all they have to, and that's, that's the thing about the rezoning process, is nobody's, nobody's entitled to a rezoning. It's, you come and you ask, you make the best possible proposal that you can, if the planning commissioner feels like you can do better, you guys can defer, ask them to do a little better, and that's, that's something that's been done many times over the years here in Southern County. And then, once they get the plan in place, show you guys what it's going to look like, the state office approves it initially, they come back to build it, that's why, it's my office, the current office, make sure that they build what they said that they're going to do at that time, and it looks the way that they promised it was going to look.
Okay, so there's no real defined standards as to the aesthetics, it's more of, does it match the plan that you submitted?
That, that's right, it's, it's, the way to think about the buzz is kind of like it's all a little mini-laden, which, for the area, and, and completed with design standards, aesthetics and science standards and everything else, and you can, they can get any deviation from any other kind of standard that's out there, they got right in that total plan, and show you, show you exactly what it's going to be.
I think this is up, that's a good issue.
Is there a question?
Yeah, we have a motion in a second. We have a motion in a second, we're ready to vote. Kathy, go ahead.
Mr. Holt? Mr. Williams? No. Mr. Issa?
No.
Mr. Klein?
Okay, three to two, we are deferred, and we will, hope to see this next one with some additional information. Okay, item two, Russell is state's final plan.
Yes, sir. Mr. this is a relatively minor item, this is a pre-residential building blocks along Red Contra Road, this is, we started one that we, done more residential, flat, in case of small, one acres, what they're doing here is they're taking this lot and dividing it into three lots. And so it's a situation where there's, there's already a house on the lot, and then we get two new building lots. Over the years, you've had a lot of questions on how to handle these, there's been some signatures a long time ago on these things, a preliminary group of properties that are required, or not required, and maybe even it could be a group administratively, because they don't take the lots, but we may practice bringing these as a final plan, depending on what you see considering. This project is represented by Rich Groves. So this is the area, an area due to subject property. You see what they're proposing to do, which is, this is the existing lot with the house on it, two new building lots. Maybe they go to two lots, it's a major subdivision for our regulations. State law allows this to be approved administratively, but the county commission has opted that we can approve five lots or less administratively without the county commission, if it's authorized by the county commission. And that's in our subdivision regulations. But the, this subdivision meets all of our standard requirements, it's an eighteen-foot wide road, lot is made all the requirements, this is not going to disturb or to the neighbor, and so there's no, no far quality requirements that, that are in effect, you know, maybe D S C plans or anything. Each lot must actually land and start from a, for the real requirement. Which is six-inch water line, White House clearly says that they can install a fire hazard at this location, and so they have, we have this condition of approval that they add height, voluntary park parkable, by our protection, and this is, we start pressing things. Set as far as our findings and facts, this is consistent with the comp plan with subdivision regulations and our subdivision, it's not going to adversely affect it by any of the health there. So after we've worked in the final plan, a lot can be, lots can be sold, a bill of permits obtained. There's example motions there on the screen to approve it, denied, there's reasons to do so, and to defer it. The example conditions, as I mentioned, will install a fire hazard along the road front edge, any of the signatures available. Mr. Graves is independent, so I'd be happy to have a question.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Graves? Josh, when was the preliminary?
That is what I'm saying, we, we, we don't, there's no reason to do it, because it's, it's, there's, there's nothing preliminary to look at, it's, there's no construction plans, there's no, there's no nothing. There's no reason to take some, this is plan permission at all, like I said, the legislature authorized it as a, this kind of thing administratively, but we have to, it's right now, our regulations say anything, one to two lots has to be approved by the plan.
Okay, so what, what has happened physically on the property, anything at this point? Not a thing?
Yeah, they're just, they're cutting off the house and adding two new lots, and then they put a high limit on it, that's, that's really good. Yeah, and so, like I was saying from beginning, the, the planning commission, a while ago, we kind of interpreted these, it doesn't disturb more than the neighbors, or it doesn't trigger construction plans or anything like that, so there's no preliminary, essentially we just sit straight to the final plan.
Okay.
And if the planning commission was okay with it, I could just approve the plan, there's nothing, there's nothing to look at, and there's no, you know, there's nothing else that we're at least, but bringing it to the planning commission is, is not as willing, we just do that in three lots.
And this is all by right?
Yes.
All right.
I can make a motion for number one with the two conditions.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Holt, second by Mr. Issa. Any questions on the motion? the motion? Okay, uh, we'll go ahead and vote. Kathy, it's on your ears.
Mr. Holmes? Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Issa?
Yes.
Okay, Pat's decision. All right, we're winding down here.
The next thing I have to do is just see if that's ready to approve. This is where, as you guys know, this is where I sit, the, uh, the smaller flats that have been approved, the flat limits and those kinds of things. And, uh, just put them on there as FYI, everybody will know the last part of those. And the last thing I got on the agenda is the records of things. Um, you guys are ready? I'll, I'll pull that up and we'll take a look at that.
We are.
So, uh, Commissioner, did you know back in February, we had a public hearing, um, some discussion on zoning resolution amendments and some amount for the R P district, rural preservation district, uh, which was indicated as a five-acre minimum lot size and the ability to reduce down to one hundred thousand square feet. Um, been a really good, good amount of feedback and discussion, folks out in the community. I'm sure you guys have heard, heard a bit about it. Um, folks and county commissioners have reached out to me, um, and with questions and, uh, comments and concerns about the way that it's structured and, you know, uh, some place came up, there were questions about, uh, just one, one of the common things that we heard from a whole lot of different people in the community is how does this impact me? You know, has this affect, now say me, and helping with the addresses and the, that owns property. And has it impact their families and those kinds of things? And so, I'm listening comments from, from county commissioners and other folks to, to take a look and see if there might be other ways to, to, to handle some of these things, uh, to accomplish the goals the planning commissions wanted to accomplish, but to, uh, to do it in a way that, uh, that provides a little more flexibility, I guess, for, for a public with, uh, property and heirs and families and those kinds of things. So we, we, we go down some and, and looked at, uh, looked at, looked around at other jurisdictions, uh, what, what they've done and, uh, looked at what we have proposed and, uh, and come up with some, some potentially revised wording, um, that, uh, I wanna run past everybody and, and just get feedback on it, see what everybody, what everybody thinks. Um, so, uh, and as I mentioned, what's proposed is a creation of, all the things that's proposed is a creation of a new zoning district, R P, the R P zoning, rural preservation. Um, as I mentioned, what we, we had something in there that, that helped that be, uh, called for it to be a five-acre minimum lot size. What we have in there right now, there's text in there that it calls for that to instead be one hundred thousand square feet, which is about two point three acres. Um, and so... This is the table where, where that is shown. And then, as far as the, you know, how it affected, um, and so the, the, the details and the details, as they say, um, there's text in here, uh, going with that variable lot size, it's variable lot size requirements that we've always had and to go in one way or another. Um, we've got wording in there now relating to public water availability. And what's in there, what we're saying is if you're, uh, in the R R, R P zone, uh, your, your variable lot size requirements apply depending on infrastructure. Uh, and what we're saying is either in the R R zone, which would remain at forty thousand square feet, um, R P zone, which would be a hundred thousand square feet, um, if you don't have a little water available, uh, then five acres would fit in on the lot size. This is what it does now and what it's been for, for some time. Um, that's, that's not new. So you see that text is not red. That's plain text there. So that basically just says the same, like it is. Um, number two, though, is, is, is new wording. Um, it says hydrogen availability. So lots not located in five hundred feet of hydrogen may not be less than five acres or two hundred seventeen thousand acres per feet. That's new zoning language, but it's not new regulatory language because our subdivision regulations say that now already. That's what they ordered up. In order to subdivide lots within a major subdivision, and I'll get to that in just a minute, there's the majors and the minors and that kind of thing. Um, in this context, uh, but, but what our subdivision regulations call for now is if you're doing a major subdivision, three lots or more, you have to have height or you can't do it. And the five acre minimum lot size is the default. Um, so that's number two. Uh, number three, have the roadway availability. Uh, and what that's saying is if you're, you're on an existing state or county maintaining roadways, you're coming in on a board road or bring field lighting or whatever, whatever road might be out in the county. Um, if it's less than eighteen feet wide, uh, you have a five acre minimum lot size. Uh, if it's, if it's a dead end, you have a five, five acre minimum lot size. Um, unless you widen, unless you pay the money as part of the development process to widen it, um, or add an additional connection to the public roadway, in which case it would go to whatever minimum lot size is for the district. In the R R, it'd be forty thousand square feet. If it was that acre, uh, in the R P zone, it would be a hundred thousand square feet. It may go to three acres.
Quick question. So on item three, if you, you have to have both an eighteen-foot and, and ten, you did it.
Right. And that, that was what, that, that text was in the last version of this as well. That's right.
Yeah, I just wanted to be certain.
If you come in along a dead end road, uh, basically you've got a five acre minimum lot size, unless you provide that secondary connection somewhere.
But, but just because you have an eighteen-foot wide road and it's still dead end, you, you don't buy that?
Right. Right. Unless, unless they provide, uh, unless they improve roadway and add that second connection.
Right, right.
Um, so that's pretty tough. That's a stringent requirement for sure.
Yeah, for sure.
Uh, number four, that's what that says. This property does not meet these requirements shall be entitled to partition lots that are not less than five acres by deed, which everybody has the right to do with their property. If they have over five acres, ten, ten acres, they do two, five, five acre tract, uh, without the county commission approval. Uh, or B, installing structures satisfying these requirements, uh, which, uh, wouldn't allow you to meet whatever the minimum lot size requirement. So basically, all, all that is pretty much what was in there. Right? Um, but the, the, the flexibility, so to get to defining the things that people have the concerns with. I don't think people will have concerns, obviously, with this as well. Not saying that they won't. But one of the biggest questions we had was about families, one lot subdivision, two lot subdivisions, those kinds of things. People were kind of with the opinion, and I did, you know, you see me to tell me if I, if I'm gonna do one lot for a family member or something like that, um, if, if, uh, I don't have height, I can't do it, you know, those kinds of things, right? And so we put, we put, uh, there's exceptions in there, number five. And so what that says is minor subdivision is defined by the county subdivision regulations are extended from the hydrant and the road portions of this provision, provided that they have public water available, uh, and provided that the minimum lot size standard is established to apply. So what that's saying is I can come in, in the R R zone, which is gonna stay the same, forty thousand square foot lots, and I can do a one or two lot subdivision. I don't have to widen any roads. I don't have to install hydrants. You don't have to do that now. You don't, you don't have to do that now. Um, and you'd be extended from those, those infrastructure requirements as long as you have public water. Um, in the R P zone, um, you'd be able to do a hundred thousand square foot lots, two acre lots. Uh, and you'd be able to, uh, to, to do, to do one or two lots, uh, for, for anybody, not necessarily for a family member or anybody. Um, and, and because that's such a low impact subdivision, again, you know, you wouldn't have to widen roads. If it's on a dead end road, you can do, you can do a lot. You can do two lots in Southern County. Um, so that, that provides a good deal of flexibility, um, for, for minor subdivisions. And in the county, if you look at the overall number of subdivisions that we receive, and we probably get a hundred, a hundred minor subdivisions per year, another hundred, minor subdivision lasts for a year. And so that, that would allow that to continue. People would continually divide off a lot and seven, and those kinds of things. All the really change in that surface has to be that it has to be a hundred thousand square feet instead of, instead of forty thousand square feet.
And so the, the R R of forty thousand square foot is only in the U G P?
That's right. That's right. That's right. Um, so by B there, um, for additional flexibility, um, we added some, some text in there that, that talks about family subdivisions. And this is, this is a lot flexibility is what this would provide. Um, basically, uh, this allows you, we borrowed this text directly from Williamson County. It's something that they do. Uh, they allow you to do up to five, one, one acre lots in any zone, um, depending on how much property owned. Uh, they allow you to divide that off for family members. There's a D restriction. There's some process that they have in place to ensure that that happens. We have in there, those need to be approved by the board of zoneroad people. You do a family subdivision, you go to the board of zoneroad people and they, they have an hearing on it. Um, and then essentially, essentially that extends you from the roadway requirements, from the hydro requirements. And even the way I've got it figured right now, it's the exemption from needing to have public water. If you, if you wanna cut off an acre for a family member, it's gonna be D restricted for, for over a decade. It's you can't sell to anybody. Um, if you want it to be on the will, that, that will be allowed. Um, so like I said, that's, that's about as flexible. That's, that's a lot more flexible than anything that we've allowed along, along the town. And so, that's like maximum pl- flexibility for families, for family situations there.
Now, if they had five, eight, one acre lots and they had one will, they can do that too?
Uh, I think probably we'd have to, we'd probably have to, uh, I don't think state will allow that. I think they require each person to have their own, I, I believe. But, but, but it's, it's kind of like accepted. Um, if we divert to the state for certain purposes too. I mean, we don't, we don't regulate wells. Um, and that's, that's regulated by the state, state division of groundwater protection.
And we still are.
Yeah. Well, we take a look at the wells and all that stuff. It's, it's a little bit opaque, although how some of that stuff gets worked, uh, through the state. So, so there's, within that five, A and B, there's a, there's a whole lot of flexibility that's built in there that was not in the last version. Um, and so that would really, to be honest with you, uh, again, people are not gonna like that or whatever. But that, that allows the business of the county to continue, uh, for folks that, that want to partition a couple of a lot here or there, whatever. Um, and it allows all that to continue, just like it does today. And, you know, of course, it's a hundred thousand square feet. That's bigger than forty thousand square feet. I can crush the numbers. Most of the lots that we, that get submitted in the county are about forty thousand square feet. Most of them, um, most of them are, are a little bigger than that. And so, but not all over a hundred thousand square feet. I'm not saying that, but they range. I did, there's a, a two lot subdivision the other day that both lots were three acres. You know, they have the right to do smaller, but that's not what it's supposed to do. Um, so it's, it's all in place in terms of the, the lot sizes that we see. But that would, that would allow things to continue. The family subdivision process will be something that will be out there. Probably wouldn't be used all that often. I'd be surprised. People, people think that they wanna use that a lot, but probably wouldn't be used as often. But it would be available, if they wanted to do it.
And offhand, the, the D restriction is ten years minimum?
Yeah, and I've got, I've got that, you know, and I've done more than that.
Okay.
So special conditions for family subdivision. This is in the, in the chapter fourteen where I grabbed this. This is, that, that deals with, uh, uh, special exception for the board of zoneroad people. And so the V C A will review these and, and firm that, uh, that zoning requirements are ten. Uh, they would have that, and it's a public hearing. They did, okay, we could talk to the property owner, who, who may get this lot too. You know, all of those conversations could be had with the V C A. Um, and so what, what their, the, the basic minimum requirements are, um, forty thousand square foot minimum lot size, uh, lot width or, or shall is a hundred foot, uh, on micro one hundred fifty on collector and two hundred along arteries. Um, establishes the setbacks, which are just the same as they are right now in the R R zone and in the R P zone. The road access standard shall file. What that's saying is you have to have road frontage. We don't allow, we wouldn't allow these lots to be served by these. And that's where they, they hold all kinds of confusion and problems. They have to actually touch public road. Um, and then the number of, of these family subdivision lots that you can create is based on a table here. We, again, we borrowed this from, from relative counties, sort of Williamson County. Um, if you have five to ten acres, you can do one, one, one acre lot for a family member, ten, fifteen, you can do two. If you see that, on social fifty, you can do up to five. And then, then it gets into some of the, uh, the, the details that you're, you're getting, Mr. Chairman, there. Uh, uh, requiring an affidavit to be signed, certifying that meets these requirements, uh, and then, and S F, and then G, there's a, is a, it poses a fifteen-year restricted covenant on, on the, on the property that it has to remain with, with it, with family members for fifteen years. Um, and could, uh, that, that we can't join bankruptcy law and those kinds of things. So if there's bankruptcy or foreclosure or something like that, there's gonna be, there's gonna be law that, that supersedes that. And so there's, there's wording in there, um, that, that deals with that too, Williamson County. Um, and H, what H says is a follow-through of a special exception against subdivision plan to the planning commission, uh, in force for the county subdivision regulations. You have to label it as, uh, Smith Acres Family Subdivision to, to clarify, show that it's a family subdivision. Um, and any other, no, no label with restricted covenants and that kind of stuff will need to be on the, on the, on the plan too, uh, as, as you guys might feel like are appropriate. Then this is just putting it in, uh, into the definitions, what a, what a family subdivision is. Divisional lot or parcel for the purpose of saving the benefit of a member of the family or the property owner. Uh, where the, this is a lot to be created. It's not meeting the minimum size requirement for the zoning district, which is okay. And then it defines meet the family. Um, so child by birth, the law, stepchild, foster grandchild, parent, 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 etc. And then this, uh, this just gets it into the table uses. Right. Right here, technical, technical divisions. And what, what that's saying is... Uh, well, what that's saying is, uh, they're allowed by special exception in our residential zones. So in the agricultural reserve, um, R P, R R, S R, zoning districts, you can get a special exception if it's yet. Uh, again, it is actually basically, basically all the infrastructure requirements. Uh, the business for a family member is, uh, it's, it's subject to a lot of, a lot of additional considerations. So it's about as flexible as you possibly get in that context. I would like to have family members. There's really not any way to do more flexibility than that. That's it.
Okay, any, any questions for anybody? Okay, uh, you know, a, a couple of points that I wanted to make is, I've been talking to a lot of people about this and, and I spent a lot of time with, uh, Josh about it as well. The, the verbiage out there in, in the county is that it's five acre minimums, but it's not. It's a hundred thousand square foot minimum. And if you don't have the proper life safety, the white load, the fire hydrants, that's when it goes back to the default of five acres. So that, that's really an important thing to note because what we're doing here is we're finishing when the county did not finish in twenty ten. Twenty ten, was it?
We got one, one history about it.
Yeah, it was twenty ten. Just, they got dropped. They, they got it to the finish line. They, they collapsed before they crossed the river. So that's, that's one important thing to remember. Number two, what we've done is a lot more flexible than the comp plan was in the time. Cause the comp plan was five acre minimums. The hundred thousand square foot lot had not happened. The, the family estate issue is a new thing. And we had to update it with the fire hydrants and, and those kinds of things because that's just, that's just where we're at. We're at fifteen years later, fourteen years later. So, so it's important as people call you, email you about this. And, you know, you're gonna get people, as I have, that maybe you already all have, are saying, I love what you're doing there. Go with it. And then you're gonna get, uh, people that say, you can't do this. You're gonna destroy my estate and, and everything. And they have to remember that there are several changes that are capable. And if, if you have a hundred and fifty acres and you wanna put a family compound in the middle of it, you don't have to notify any neighbors if you're outside of five hundred feet. Isn't that correct? Yeah, if, if you own all the land, but this is in the center and, and it's more than five hundred feet, you don't have to notify any neighbors of, of what you're doing because it's all your property. So thi- this is, this is an important step because as we learned in the, in the, uh, for, the hour from four o'clock to five o'clock. So this is, this is an important step because as we learn in the, in the, for, the hours, we've been from four o'clock to five o'clock, is, we're, what we're trying to do is plan exactly like he had said that we should be. And we're trying to create a county that is all inclusive of everybody and is self-sustaining as a county on its own. Because currently with that many, with a quarter of our population leaving the county every day to go to work, we are a veteran community. There's just no other way to put it. That's not what we want to be, the, the long-term sustenance will not happen from a veteran community. And I know some people do it because I'm from California initially, but I saw every mistake they made out there. And people driving three hours each direction to work just above the house is not a good solution. And that's where we're headed if we don't do proper planning. So I encourage you, if you have any questions for anybody else, especially for staff, please ask them. Because in a month, we are going to have a hearing on this at the planning commission. Do we, do we need to?
Well, so that's, you know, that's some standup to the, to the mind impression on stage if you guys want to follow. If you guys want to have, you know, kind of all type, type, degree of meaning kind of thing, and that's the concept you had in mind. Certainly, that's, that's, that's something could be done.
Is it sound recorded?
No, it's not recorded. All, what's, what's required is the public here to the planning commission has that public hearing. And so that public hearing has to be advertised in respect of ten days prior to the meeting. And over that, the public hearing will make any other changes. And that's, that's what satisfies the planning commission's public hearing requirements. Then goes all the county commissions in there. And that hearing has to be advertised in a day and a night prior to the meeting.
So does everybody feel like we can pull the trigger on this and finish the job and start it in twenty ten? Everybody good with that? Okay, so we'll go ahead and give notification for next month's...
And I, I do want to say that, and so this, y'all are going to like what I'm about to say.
Okay.
All right. But the elephant in the room still is to make the planning commission makeup. There is an issue there where I'm at at the staff level is I have an answer to a question I asked from C Task. Where I asked the question, is it properly constituted, should this body undertake a zone, a significant zone of change? You had the specifics of the question, but it didn't make any ruling on whether we should or should not be doing that. It was the makeup of the board was the problem. And where I'm at, where, where I'm at at the staff level right now is I've been told by C Task, no, actually, that is no, it should not be done. And so I'm, I'm at the staff level, I'm all in on them where if I'm going to be advertising this, knowing what C Task has told me, the answer is, I'm, I'm, there's exposure out there for me. For professionals, potentially, potentially, I don't know, not a lawyer, but there's, there's, never have I been, I've never been placed in a situation where, where I've never acted on maybe where I've talked to N Task or C Task or whatever, and given me an answer, and then I've gone and done the opposite. And so in order to move forward on this, and I'm not waiting off that of politics of getting the board fixed or anything, but the legal office on, on, you know, the high spot, I've got to have something and writing from the, from the law office saying that C Task is wrong on this. And that we need to move forward on it. I hate to be that blunt, but, but C Task very ungluedly gave us an opinion. And so if, 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 if the law office disagrees, and if the law office says, gosh, they misread the law, or whatever it might be, this is, this is good to go, there's no, we're saying that we're giving our legal opinion and it's okay advertising this. I'm, the line is put in the paper, we move forward with it. But like I said, I've never been in a situation where I've had, or the state advisory agencies have set up and advised us on a lot of things, tell me a little thing, and then I go to the office and I'm repaying, I've never done that before, and I've got some discount to do.
Now, the last thing I want to do is some Jew integrity. On the other hand, we're down strong here. We're, we're told that because of our makeup, nothing we do is legal. And Mr. Sutt, do you have any opinion on this at all from a legal standpoint?
Here's the issue, the board has constituted, has four citizens and three measures, as, as, as to that is a properly constituted. But on the other hand, all seats are filled, there is some uncertainty. There's never a, you never be one hundred percent as to what the answer would be, but there are moments of both sides. I see where Josh is coming from, you don't want to put him in there, and where you expose him to liability or expose us more to liability. I think before you make any significant changes, you should really consider moving forward the, the... You should wait until you have a properly, fully constituted board, or a way you have a certainty that would come about. I'm not saying that one way or the other would affect people, you don't want to have that uncertainty, especially something this important.
Okay, well, I've asked this question before, and I think it's worth asking again. This is a recommendation, because what we're doing, or what we would do, has no teeth. It's, you know, when we approve a final plat like we just did, that stops with us. Now, if somebody who's against that final plat wanted to challenge us in court, would Mr. Sutt be under the same exposure and would it be reversible? Can you hear me?
Well, so we brought the elephant in the room. The mayor took two minutes to recommend before, and he didn't make it. He didn't show up to the last committee on committees meeting, much less try to bring anybody in the floor. So if everybody thinks we're operating illegally, stop having the planning commission and see what happens, we don't really get sued. So, I mean, I think it's the same liability moment in time, and not even legal advice. It's the same liability class that are at the plat for him doing just, let me see what the correct verb is here. It's administrative approvals, those can be, as well as anything that we have. So we're in sand, we're in a stalemate, it's sand still, and, I mean, our hands are involved, there's nothing we can do, but, I mean, the will, the will of this body...
I don't mean to say that this board is acting improperly, I'm just saying there's a huge degree of uncertainty that exists right now. I'm not saying acting right now is wrong, or not acting right now is wrong, or the board is properly set up, or not properly set up. I'm saying there's a great deal of uncertainty, you have this tension between state, state law requires, you know, which requires a mayor to recommend the county commission to a point. That is the main source of tension right now. And that's kind of a checks and balances sort of a thing. And I'm not saying that the board is improperly set up, or that it is properly set up right now. I'm saying that there is uncertainty at this point.
Well, and additionally, for the record, I was at the committee on committee meetings, not this past one, but the one prior, where the chairman suggested that there were two people that had already been vetted up committee on committees and would accept on the spot if the mayor put them forward, and he didn't. And then there was, there was nobody presented at the last meeting. So my point is, is that we can finish our terms and be a totally, I guess, we would just not be able to do anything without the concern of legally being challenged on everything we do. And I, I completely appreciate Mr. Sutt's position, and I don't want to put him or his family in any kind of jeopardy at all. And I think what I'm hearing is he's very uncomfortable with putting himself in that spot. As legal counsel, are we able, are you able, and as, as the attorneys for the commission, able to write him a letter that would satisfy him? I know you guys talk on a daily basis. I have one second.
Well, I'm not sure what I'd like to run there about, and we give up certainty here. And I'm not aware of any situation in the state where we have a similar situation, I know we've used research into that. But the problem is, is the uncertainty that is with the energy, you know, how to hold the rule. Because I said, this board is properly constituted in that you have four citizen members and you have three commissioners. And on the other hand, you have the fact that the board is not fully composed, so that's a tension that you have right there. You know, and that's the, that's the cause of that uncertainty. I can, I can make no guarantees he's asking how to hold the rule on, on any of those issues.
And there's nothing we can do to motivate the mayor to put anybody forward legally?
No, this is, it's not, it's very, you know, recommended job to either approve or reject, we must forward.
Commissioner Miller?
I'd like to take the opportunity, maybe tomorrow, to speak with the law director about this and see what he's thinking is, and, you know, what can he agree?
Would that be said?
Absolutely, yeah, and that's, that's essentially what I'm, what I'm really asking for. You know, it's just, you know, the last word that I have is from C Task. And, you know, but the law has provided a senior counsel to this county and not C Task. And so if I can get something, something that, that gives me some guidance, essentially, on what the right thing to do is here, then it would be very helpful.
Okay, well, I, I think we all appreciate where you're at, and, okay.
Question in here?
Motion, do we have a second?
Never gets...
Okay, all in favor? I...